Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock. The meeting will come to order. I'm Grace Lesbrunz, Cascade Supervisor. Please, Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Trustee Castle.
Here.
Treasure Pierce.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Here.
Clerks Slater, here. Supervisor Lesbrunz.
Here. Please rise if possible for the Pledge of Allegiance. Article three, approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion or discussion?
Shipley moves to approve.
Second. That's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by clerks Slater, to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Presentations. We have none tonight. Next up would be public comments. We've got a lot of people tonight, so I'm going to stick closely to the three-minute timeframe, and we'll set the timer to help me enforce that and to help you know where you're at. We ask that you speak closely and kind of loudly to the mic, so it's easier for us to hear, and also state your name and your address for our record-keeping. So we'll first welcome anyone, if possible, to come up directly to the microphone. And then afterward, excuse me. And after we have heard from everyone who wants to speak here, we'll make it open to residents who are virtually watching. And then lastly, there's the Special Assessment District. Now, there are other items on the agenda where there's a specific time to hear public comments when those articles come up. So we'd ask that those of you wishing to speak on the special assessment or anything on the agenda, hold off for now, and once we get to that item, we'll hear from everyone who wants to speak. So with that, welcome.
First thing I'd like to ask, are any of you members of the Thornapple River Association? None?
Oh, sir, can we have your name and address? Can we please have your name and address?
Are any of you members there, members of the Thornapple River Association?
Above the dam? Above the Cascade Dam?
Yeah, if you're a member of the association of the river.
No, we belong to the, we belong to the other association, but not the one you're referencing.
Okay. My bet is you ruined the Thornapple Bayou. I live on it. Years ago, they were going to assess me $365 to dredge it. I didn't like it, but I accepted it. But now, when I left here, the commissioner and the drain commissioner and I walked all the way to my truck. And they said it went, it failed. I'll tell you right now, that's the worst dredging I ever seen in my life. The dredge started dredging 300 feet from me. I got a gravel bar in front of my property. I don't anymore. After they finished dredging it, I had about eight inches of crap on it. And no longer a gravel bar. Most of my neighbors got about four inches. Why is Thornapple Bayou even in control? Because the DNR said it cannot be dredged again. Did you know that?
I'd heard that. Yep. Sir, you're, so three minutes, and I, we want to hear from you, and we don't want to cut you off, but comments going forward.
You don't want to talk to me.
No, I'm just saying that comments about the Special Assessment District, we're gonna...
That's what I'm talking about.
We just want to keep those to, to the time set aside for those. I don't want to cut you off, sir. I just, going forward. Go ahead. Sorry to interrupt.
My neighbor, Stuart. When I moved there, there's this big old tree. He mowed around it. Guess what? Right there is the river next to it. Okay. But this is crap. All this push for is the Thornapple River Association wants to dredge by the railroad tracks so they can get their bigger boats up. And you can't tell me that's not the whole thing, because they never got enough votes for anything until you people thought it was a great idea. And this thing says gonna invasive species. Why don't, if you got invasive species, why don't you go out in front of your lawn where the river is and pull it yourself? Why do you want me to pay for what you want? And that's basically what this is. The association wants everybody to pay for what they want.
Thank you, sir. Oh, sir, may we get, can we get your name just for our records? Anyone else wishing to speak on anything other than what specifically has a time set aside for public comment tonight? Anyone virtually?
Does anyone participating via Zoom have any public comment? I'm going to give it a few minutes, supervisor. Supervisor, there's one comment from Kelsey Baker, and all it says is no, so I'm not certain if that's...
Thank you. That will conclude this portion of our public comments. Article six, approval of consent agenda.
Support.
That's a motion by trustee Castle, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article seven, financial actions. Is there a motion or discussion?
We approved the July 2021 payroll, payrolls, payables, and transfers in the July 2021 financial report.
Support.
That's a motion by Treasurer Pierce, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the financial actions. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Unfinished business? We have none tonight. Article nine, new business. First is 902021, Resolution of Revocation of an Industrial Facilities Exemption. Certificate 2010-149 for Flex Lab LLC. Ms. Corhorne?
Thank you. So this is a public hearing tonight for Flex Fab. They are asking to revoke their industrial facilities exemption certificate, number 2010-149. It was granted in 2010 for a new facility located at 533333rd Street. And it was for personal property as well as real property. And the reason for the revocation tonight is the company, along with their equipment, have moved out of Cascade Township into a different county. And so the Public Act does allow us to revoke their certificate. It did expire at the end of this year, and staff is recommending approval of the resolution in the packet to revoke the certificate.
Make a motion to open public hearing?
Some support.
It's a motion by clerk Slater, supported by trustee Castle, to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We're in public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on this item? We welcome hearing from you.
Move to close public hearing?
Support.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley, to close the public hearing. Is there a discussion or a motion? Andrew Swayze?
Just a real quick comment. So the township does have an IFT policy in regards to revoking of IFT exemptions. Basically, it lays out a progressive process by, if it's revoked during certain times during the process, we would actually have a clawback as well. You know, the reason that we give out these IFTs is we expect them to make the investment in our township over a specified period of time. Basically, after eight years, we don't have any clawback anymore. So, you know, if this is an IFT that we had approved two or three years ago, we'd probably be coming to you, talking about, you know, how we would address it based on that policy. But because they operated in the township past the eight-year timeframe, we're not recommending any clawback at this point.
Thank you.
Shipley makes a motion to revoke the certificate.
Support.
We have to vote on closing public hearing.
Let's first vote on the public hearing. Motion? Motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley, to close the public session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there another motion?
I'll make another motion to revoke their exemption certificate.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Castle, to revoke the industrial facilities exemption as outlined in 902021B. All in, oh, clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yay.
Trustee Castle.
Yes.
Treasure Pierce.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Clerks Slater, yes. Supervisor Lesbrunz.
Yes. Motion carried. Item 0912021, Resolutions to Transfer and Extend an Industrial Facilities Exemption Certificate for Lakeland Monroe LLC. Thank you, Ms. Corhorne.
Thank you. This, again, is a public hearing tonight, and Lakeland Monroe has applied for a transfer as well as an extension of the IFE certificate. This was originally issued for Key Plastics. So there's two resolutions in the packet tonight for this request. The first resolution, excuse me, is approving the transfer request. And then the second resolution is to approve the extension of the certificate. So it's just one certificate for the transfer. The amount of that exemption request is $824,561. That is certificate 2016186. And the, so that certificate was expiring this year. It was originally requested by Key Plastics for five years, so it was expiring at the end of this year. And so, again, the applicant is requesting an extension of that certificate as well as a transfer. They have signed a, Lakeland Monroe has signed a seven-year lease. And so they are requesting the extension for seven years, which would mean this would expire December of 2028. So everything is in the packet tonight. Jennifer is here, manager of Assessment Services, for questions. We also have representative from Lakeland Monroe, as well as High Point here, for questions regarding this extension and transfer as well.
Sandra, I have a question. They could have, in the first place, gotten 12 years if they'd asked for it, correct?
Key Plastics could have. It's quite possible they only asked for five years, because maybe that was the length of their lease. And so we would only approve it for the length of their lease. But yes, 12 years is the, yes, correct.
I make a motion to open public hearing?
Support.
It's a motion by clerk Slater, supported by trustee McDonald, to open public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We're in public hearing. Would anyone like to comment on this specific agenda item? Hearing none? Is there a motion?
Move to close public hearing?
Support.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley, to close the public hearing. Moving on to specifically subpart, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. First, Subpart B, is there a motion or discussion to transfer the exemption certificate for Lakeland Monroe LLC?
Motion to transfer to Lakeland LLC?
Support.
I have a comment.
Oh, trustee Shipley.
Sure. Lakeland, I believe, has got at least three facilities in the township. They've been in the township for a long time. And they've always kept their properties nice and neat. So I think that they're, we should consider one of our premier commercial assets. That's all I have. I know I don't have any stock in them.
So that is a motion by trustee Castle, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve the resolution to transfer the industrial facilities exemption certificate for Lakeland. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Treasure Pierce.
Yes.
Trustee Castle.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yay.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Clerks Slater, yes. Supervisor Lesbrunz.
Yes. Subpart B, Resolution to Extend the Industrial Facilities Exemption Certificate for Lakeland Monroe. Is there a discussion or a motion?
Make a motion to extend for additional seven years the resolution for, for the exemption for Lakeland Industrial.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Castle, supported by trustee Shipley, to extend the industrial facilities exemption certificate for Lakeland Monroe LLC. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Castle.
Yes.
Treasure Pierce.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Clerks Slater, yes. Supervisor Lesbrunz.
Yes. Motion carried. Item 922021, Resolution to Transfer an Industrial Facilities Exemption Certificate for Sparks Belting Company.
Thank you. So this certificate, we'll deal with the transfer first. This was originally issued to Compatico. There's one certificate with this transfer, and the amount of the exemption is $2,564,629. This is certificate 2016046. And this certificate expires December 30, 2028. And they are requesting that the certificate be granted, the transfer be granted for the remainder of the original approval. Again, attached in the packet is the application and all the exhibits. They are located at 5005 Craft Avenue. And we do have a representative here tonight, Brian Sikama, is representing Sparks Belting. Should you have any questions for this transfer?
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Castle, supported by trustee Shipley, to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on this agenda item? Welcome. Oh. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are in public hearing. For anyone wishing to comment?
Supervisor Lesbrunz?
Oh, yes.
I would just like to make note that the transfer request is strictly just on the real property, or, I mean, not on the personal property. So the certificate covers both, but this transfer is strictly just on the real.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to close public hearing?
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by both trustee McDonald and trustee Castle. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Discussion or a motion?
I make a motion to, whatever am I doing now? Transfer an industrial facilities exemption certificate for Sparks.
Support.
This one is the transfer, not the exemption?
Transfer.
Transfer.
Thank you. It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Castle, to approve the exemption for Sparks Belting Company. Clerks Slater? Please call the roll.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Treasure Pierce.
Yes.
Trustee Castle.
Yes.
Clerks Slater, yes. Supervisor Lesbrunz.
Yes. Motion carried. My eyes are glazing over from the, they all look the same. Item 932021, Resolution to Approve an Industrial Facilities Exemption Certificate for Sparks Belting Company.
Make a motion to open public hearing.
Welcome. Oh, no, go ahead. Do we want to hear it?
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
We're all in.
All right, thank you. This is the last one. So this is for a exemption certificate for a new facility for Sparks Belting. So they did apply for an abatement for a new facility at their location at 5005 Craft Avenue. And it is for the construction of 20,000 square feet, just under 20,000 square feet, within the additional, or the existing building. And they are adding a urethane room. So they anticipate between 85 and 95 jobs will be created within two years of completion of this project. And the amount of the exemption request is $134,424. It's all for real property, no personal property. It is recommended that this certificate be granted for a period of 10 years. That is the length of their lease, so we cannot approve it for longer than 10 years. So, again, attached are the application and all the exhibits by Sparks Belting, explaining the project. And Jennifer's here, again, for questions. Should you have any tonight? And I think Brian's up there. Should we have any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion to enter public hearing?
Support.
Motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley, to open a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Anyone wishing to comment on this item? We would love to hear from you.
Move to close public hearing?
Support.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley, to close public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Subpart B, to actually approve the exemption. Is there a discussion or a motion?
Discussion. This is actually going to add some 95 employees or so to the township.
Eighty-five to 95, yes.
And that's one of our developing areas down there, south of the airport.
Correct.
Which will continue to see growth for quite a while down there.
Correct.
Okay. That's all my comments.
Move to approve the industrial facilities exemption certificate for Sparks Belting?
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by, excuse me, trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the industrial facilities exemption certificate for Sparks Belting Company. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Castle.
Yes.
Treasure Pierce.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Clerks Slater, yes. Supervisor Lesbrunz.
Yes. Motion carried. Item 942021, Resolution to Approve the Levy of the 2021 Millage Rates. Are we going to hear from anyone? Thank you.
So, good evening, board. Jennifer, with the manager of Assessment Services. Back in December of 2019, or 2020, my goodness, you guys had approved the intent to levy the millage rates for 2021. And the millage rates have been set, and so we have the Form 4029 produced. And we would like to request that you set the millage rates for collection of the winter taxes for Cascade Township. And so the resolution has been reviewed, and we request that you approve this. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer those.
Thank you.
Jennifer, as a taxpayer, I've got a question.
Sure.
Is my rates, am I going to be paying more or less, or the same?
The township millage rate had a slight rollback, so we did have a millage reduction action. So the millage rates, we didn't have any increase in the millage rate, so they did slightly go down. But there was a consumer price index rate of inflation on all taxable values across the board, which was 1.14. And so the taxable values do increase. So, I mean, taxes do increase based on the consumer price index up by the state of Michigan, or increases to value based on additions or new construction, things like that.
Okay.
Just to add on to that, a little bit of Civics 101. So the Headley Amendment was passed in the 1970s, I believe. It's old. But basically, what it says is that if you take away all of the new items that are coming into the township, either new construction or improvement to houses, the taxable value of the township cannot increase faster than the rate of inflation. So as Jennifer mentioned, you apply the CPI index to all of the properties to get whatever the new taxable value is. But another way you can increase value of your property in the township is if it becomes uncapped. So when you own property, the taxable value increase is capped every year by the CPI. And then when you sell it, it becomes uncapped, and it once again becomes half of the state equalized value. Well, if you have a year where there's a bunch of uncappings, your taxable value can increase faster than the rate of inflation. So what the six pages of calculations is in here from the county is they basically calculate to make sure the tax rate isn't increasing faster than the rate of inflation. And that's where you get the rollback on those.
That's a really good explanation, Ben.
The net answer for John's purpose is the millage rates went down, but the values may have gone up. So therefore, what your actual property tax may be, it may kind of be neutral. For the most part, it may have gone up a little, may have gone down.
There's going to be a test on this later.
Multiple choice.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I move to approve the levy of the 2021 millage rates.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the levy of the 2021 millage rates. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Treasure Pierce.
Yes.
Trustee Castle.
Yes.
Clerks Slater, yes. Supervisor Lesbrunz.
Yes. Motion carried. Item 952021, Consider Contract with Aquatic Consulting Resources for Fall 2021 Gypsy Moth Survey.
I like it better for Jennifer and Sandra are doing things. I should have drafted them to do mine as well. So we've received the proposed agreement from Aquatic Consulting Services LLC to do our gypsy moth egg mass survey. And that is the process we use to determine the areas that will require aerial spraying in 2022. So we've worked with this company for the past 24 years to assist in the spraying program. And if it's approved by the township board, it would be conducted this fall, and then the results would be used to determine spray block configuration for treatments in spring of 2022, if the township board chooses to approve that contract. So we did spray for gypsy moths in the spring of 2021. We sprayed 755 acres, which is about an average volume of spraying for the township than in the, given the recent past. And our gypsy moth population in Cascade Township has been substantially controlled over the past two years by our spraying program. The follow-up survey to our spraying program considered it was success, success, according to our biologist from ACS, Neil Swanson. While the township's gypsy moth population remains under control, many reports are indicating that infestations around the state in untreated areas are the worst they've seen in 25 or 30 years, which is essentially when the gypsy moth was introduced into the Michigan ecosystem. I will say that I have had calls from about, you know, eight to a dozen managers throughout the state. Our, if you Google "gypsy moth spraying," Cascade Township comes up pretty, pretty quick, and asking how we do it. So a lot of people are interested in spraying programs because of the issues we've had. So we're not currently in the multi-year contract with Hamilton Helicopters, which is our applicator for the gypsy moth program. The spray contract, if desired by the township, can be negotiated and considered in the spring once the survey is completed and the recommended spray areas and volumes are known. So I did include a couple of items in your packet, the letter from ACR detailing the gypsy moth survey program, the proposed agreement for the survey, gypsy moth information brochure published by the MSU Extension, and the two thousand and twenty-one aerial spray map as well. So if I, as I mentioned, we've been doing the spray program in conjunction with Aquatic Consulting Services for twenty-four years. And historically, we've done that because the board has acknowledged the devastating effect the gypsy moth population could have on the canopy cover of the township. And our partnership with Aquatic Consulting allows us to efficiently allocate our financial resources to the program, ensures that we're only spraying the areas of infestation that are above the thresholds. And on several occasions, we've been able to not spray at all because we've been identified, be able to identify low populations. That was most recently in two thousand and thirteen and then both in two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven. So the proposed contract is nine thousand and fifty dollars. That's included in the two thousand and twenty-one budget. The cost of the survey work is a two hundred and fifty dollar increase or two point eight percent over the two thousand and twenty contract.
Just to do something, Ben, and the MT publication that the state may have money available or controlling invasive species.
So they do. I don't believe that aerial spraying of this nature would be available. Typically, that's for ground picking invasive species, but I could certainly look look further into it.
It's not a big amount that we budget, but I just thought I'd mention it.
Comment? Um, it's evident that our township has gone above and beyond it, controlling that little pest where some of our surrounding townships have not. I was up at Howard City this past weekend. Their canopies are just about naked. So I'm all in favor of controlling the little blighter.
I just wanted to mention that the irony of us talking about gypsy moth maintenance is not lost on all the people that are here to talk about river maintenance. So it's not.
And I just wanted to add, when people hear spraying, sometimes they think this is a general insecticide, which it is not. I think one of the good things about this, the gypsy moss treatment that we've done for the last couple of decades, it's a very targeted type of of treatment that the gypsy moth actually has to eat in a certain time of its life cycle, which is why this specialist is so good at it, because they know when to treat, and so it really targets the gypsy moth. And they have to ingest it. So it's not something that's killing bees or other insects. It's really targeted. And so it's been a very effective, as John said, it's been a very effective a treatment program, and we kind of stand out having good tree canopy, and I think we'd like to keep that. So with that, I move to approve Aquatic Consulting Resources, which is just for the population count and survey and to to lead into the spraying for next year.
Support.
It's a motion by Trustee McDonald, supported by Trustee Shipley to consider the contract with Aquatic, excuse me, Aquatic Consulting Resources for gypsy, for the fall two twenty twenty twenty-one gypsy moth survey. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item nine six twenty twenty-one. Beer tent for the twenty twenty-one Cascade Heritage Day.
Great, thank you. So this is the last approval item for Cascade Heritage Day. The township board did approve the concept of the new festival earlier this year. In the past couple of meetings, we've kind of approved some of the other more intricate details of the event item by item. The listed activities to be included in the event are the five K fun run, coal whore tournament, museum tours, and historical activities, family inflatables, rides, activities, friends of the library, book sale, food vendors, live music, and then if approved tonight by the township board, a beer tent. So it took us a while to kind of pull together all the details for this type of event because we haven't run one before, but we think we've put together a a pretty good and efficient process. So the beer tent time of operation will be both from nine thirty to one thirty and five to nine. The nine thirty to one thirty timeframe will be sponsored and paid for by the Athletic Timers of Michigan, and that's the entity that's doing the cornhole tournament and the five K fun run as well. And then from five o'clock until nine o'clock, it'll be open and paid for by event proceeds. So we would like to contract with Wildwood Family Farms to do our certified serving. So they have trained servers to be able to serve. The beer and root beer would be provided by Thorn Apple Brewing and Schmoes. The price of that varies based on the beer or the root beer. And the most important part is uncapped kegs can be returned. So the event isn't as successful as we hope it is. We don't have to keep untapped kegs. We can return those to the brewery. And then the township would have to buy an insurance rider as well. So included in the proposal are the proposed invoice from Wildwood Family Farms and the breakdown of the costs. So the combination of Athletic Timers of Michigan covers costs for the earlier beer ten hours as well as the ability of the township to return any non-tapped kegs, keeps the financial risk to the township at a minimum. A rough calculation saw the need to sell approximately seven and a half barrels to recover costs associated with the event. And then should adverse adverse conditions result in slower than anticipated sales, we can control the cost by returning unused beverages and reducing the amount of staff present from Wildwood Farms. Revenues from event sponsorships can also help cover any potential shortfalls. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
How much does a rider cost, the township, and also what's the liability? I just.
So the insurance rider is seven hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Thank you.
Yep. That covers up to, that's up to a million dollars of coverage, which was the recommendation from our insurance company.
This event that's happening on September twenty-fifth is, was largely organized by Brad Anderson. He's a teacher at Forest Hills Central, and he also coaches wrestling. And he, we had wanted to do something because the Fourth of July event was canceled twice, and we wanted to do something in the fall. And then Brad Anderson came out of nowhere with all this energy and planning, and it just worked out really well, and he has all the right connections. So he put a lot of time and energy, and I think he's, he's really passionate about it, and it shows. So we could be kind of duds that helped it happen, but really the success of it is all because of Brad Anderson. So he's a good guy. He loves Cascade, and he just, we're lucky to have him.
I make a motion to approve. Support.
It's a motion by Trustee Shipley, supported by Trustee Kessel to approve the beer tent for the twenty twenty-one Cascade Heritage Day. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item nine seven twenty twenty-one. Resolution of confirmation of the special assessment role, liens, payment, and collection of special assessments for the Lareway Lake Special Assessment District. There a motion to go in? Oh.
Thank you. So we received a petition circulated by property owners on Lareway Lake to make certain improvements to Lareway Lake, including weed control and removal, and for the cost of the improvements to be specially assessed against parcels of land within the district. So the request is for the cost to be equally assessed against all parcels that front Lareway Lake, with the exception of vacant parcels owned by duplicate homeowners. So they have requested that the special assessment district be implemented for ten years. The total parcel count for the district is twenty-three. The requested work to be done is approximately eleven thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. And each parcel would be assessed approximately five hundred and four dollars per year during the assessment. So the special assessment districts being established pursuant to Public Act one eighty-eight of the Public Acts of nineteen fifty-four, you'll hear me refer to that as Act, the Act or Act one eighty-eight for shorthand. Should be noted that while the petition was received by the Lareway Lake property owners, the process was initiated and moved forward on the initiative of the township board, and legally, the board's not compelled to carry through the special assessment district if it determines it's not in the best interest of the public. So this district was originally approved by the township board at the February tenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting. After that meeting, in consultation with our special legal counsel, it was determined that the special assessment role wasn't properly certified prior to the role being approved by the township board. And at the recommendation of that special legal counsel, at the May twenty-six township board meeting, the board adopted a resolution declaring a defect in the special assessment district proceedings. The resolution rescinded Resolution number three, which was originally passed on January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and Resolution four, which was originally passed on February tenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and indicated the intent to proceed with the new resolution. So at September eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, tonight, the board will hold a public hearing for the purposes of reviewing the special assessment role and for hearing all persons interested in the special assessment role and any objections to the role. So after the public hearings, the board has the option to approve the resolution, which among other things will confirm the special assessment role, cause the special assessments to be collected beginning the township winter two thousand and twenty-two tax bill. So I do want to note that if the township board does not take action to approve the resolution tonight, there's really two, two other options. One would be to vote against the resolution. If there's a vote against the resolution, then that ends the process. The township could also vote to table the resolution to a future meeting. And another public hearing would not have to be held after that. So this public hearing will qualify. If the board chose to push that decision off to another meeting, you can, you can do so by tabling the resolution. So I included a couple of items in your packet. The resolution to be considered if the board so chooses. The special assessment role, proposed certified special assessment role for Lareway Lake District number one, estimated costs and plans for the improvements, and the public notice information that was sent out in accordance with the SAD process. So if the SAD is established, it's recommended that the board approve an ad hoc committee, consider consisting of township staff, officials, and residents included in the SAD to provide direction on the expenditure of the dollars. Though I will note that the final appropriation is always at the board level, so that would just be a recommendation body. And if the board does approve the SAD, I bring a resolution in a future meeting establishing that ad hoc committee. So if Resolutions number four, number four is approved by the board, it'll accomplish the following. So the special assessment role will be confirmed, including the installment schedule, which is ten percent, the interest rate, which is zero percent, and the delinquency penalty, which is one percent for each month or fraction thereafter. So it sets requirements that a public hearing has to be held in accordance with Section four A of the Act if one of two things happen. Either the overall incremental cost of the entire SAD exceeds ten percent over the life of the SAD, or in a single year, if the pro, if the overall incremental cost increase exceeds the CIP for that single year. So as Jennifer mentioned in her presentation earlier, the the C, CPI, sorry, that's a typo. The CPI was one point one four percent this past year. So if the township board chose to improve, to increase the SAD past that one point one four percent, you'd have to hold a public hearing in accordance with the Act in order to do that. And then over the entire ten years, if at any point the increase over the original estimates that are in this resolution increases ten percent, you would also have to hold a public hearing after that. So there's some confusion in, from the public, and really from my end as well, on that interpretation last time, but our township attorney has indicated that that is over the lifetime of the SAD. It's not each individual year. So two different scenarios where the township board would have to do that. I would note that the the ten percent item is in the Act. The township can't, can't mess with that. The CPI item is something that I've included in the resolution that would be optional for the board. So if the board is interested in making sure that we demonstrate to the public that those hearings will happen, that's optional language that the board can approve, and that's why it's highlighted in the resolution for you. The other items it'll do will order the special assessment to be collected with the warrant being transferred from the clerk to the treasurer. It allocates the special assessment on a per parcel basis and causes the notice of confirmation to be sent to all parties in the SAD. Again, if established, it'll produce eleven thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars per year. Those funds are kept in a separate fund and only can be utilized for the purposes outlined in the SAD plan documents. If for any reason the board chose to eliminate or rescind the SAD, if there's any money left over in that account, it has to go back to the residents proportionally in the way it was collected. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
How many ayes and nays have you received any comments about this particular SAD?
Is that time to do that now, Supervisor?
Sure, on this one.
All right. So as part of the notice process that was sent out to all of the people in the SAD, did include a simple survey for them to send back if they so wished. Also gave them the option, obviously, to come tonight, or also email me as well. So my intention is to not read all of these verbatim as we did while we were zooming. But instead, simply note the name, the address, or whether or not they were in support of the SAD. So for Lareway Lake, we got four responses in the, thank you. This looks like Thorn Apple. So in the yes column, we had Tom Coster, nineteen thirty Box Thorn Court Southeast, support. Owen Pyle, nineteen forty-four Box Thorn Southeast, support. And Krista Price at nineteen forty-three Lareway Lake Drive and nineteen fifty-five Lareway Lake Drive. The only one of those parcels would be included in the district support. And then we had Gary and Linkle, Linda Forrester, and Allison Glorinsky at nineteen sixty-nine Lareway Lake Drive that did not support the SAD.
Is there a motion to enter a public hearing?
Support.
It's a motion by Trustee McDonald, supported by Trustee Shipley to open the public hearing on this Lareway Lake Special Assessment District. So anyone wishing to comment on Lareway Lake?
Supervisor Les Prince, if I may speak one moment. We're having trouble in the back hearing, and I am not an electronics guru, so if everyone up there specifically could please push your microphones toward you. Because the folks in the back can't hear, and I want everyone to be able to hear. Sorry about that. And anyone coming up for public comment, if you are unable to get up there, please just raise your hand, and I would be happy to bring this microphone over.
Thanks, Chrissy. And all in favor of the public hearing?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are now in public hearing. Make sure you wanted to count, Mr. Whitley. This is on Lareway Lake, but we'd love to hear from you.
Yes, I understand. It's our relate. The the questionnaire or survey that was provided had the words, words on it. All information received by the township prior to the public hearing will be shared with all members of the township board. Was that done?
Yes.
Based on the questions I heard just now, it it seemed doubtful that that was done. So I just wanted to get confirmation that, that everyone received those comments and that the questions just now were unrelated or whatever. You know.
Manager Swayze.
So every piece of public comment that was received up until two o'clock PM today has been transferred to the township board members. Anything transferred, received after two PM today, I have here and will be able to share.
Okay, I'm sure that, you know, because a lot of people were very concerned about what to put in the comment section, and I just wanted to make sure that whatever pains they took in preparing those words were actually, you know, relayed to the participants. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And what about the emails? There was at least one that came to yourself and myself, but not the entire board. Just want to make sure we shared those with everyone.
I have all of those as well. Again, I had a couple that came in after two PM. The email that I just shared came after two PM, so that wasn't included earlier for the the board members. And then got a couple handed to me as as it came in. So I have the counts, and we'll read the names and all of that. Anything that was received after two PM will certainly still be included as part of the official record of the township board.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment?
There was three yeses and one no.
Anyone virtually?
Would like to speak, I amestigator of this petition more or less.
Tom Coster at nineteen thirty Box Thorn Court. And I've worked very hard to try and get our lake cleaned up for the number of years. And so I actually did have petitions turned over to Ben over a year and a half ago with everybody on the lake approving this. So it's not that they're not saying they don't want to. They thought they already did this once. We thought this was a finished. We thought this was a finished project. Obviously, the ball got dropped, and that's why we're here tonight. So I just want to make sure that you knew that everybody's in approval other than one person. So.
Mr. Costa, I don't, I've never met you, but I I know your wife.
Yes.
And I just wanted to apologize that um probably the, we could have done better update, keeping them, the Laramie Lake residents um better informed of, especially about the delay. So thanks for.
And Ben, I don't know if you've been working with the vendor because they've just sprayed again for the fifth time this year. So I don't know if you've got a side deal worked out with them, but.
I've not been working with the vendor.
They're working for free, but they've been there the fifth time today. So and it's, it's doing a tremendous job. So.
All right.
So, so it's a, okay, good.
All right. So I don't know who's going to take care of their bill, but I'm sure have they, have you communicated with them at all?
I have not. No.
Okay.
Let's just not ask, but we'll deal with it when we get it, right?
I would have to say one thing. I'm very shocked by the lack of communication when a public uh, a person of the public tries to call the township and doesn't get returned phone calls. I have to say, as a businessman of forty-two years, I'm very disappointed in the response that we get from our public officials who are supposed to serve the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shipley makes a motion to close the public hearing.
I think we've got one more.
Okay.
I just wanted to ask the gentleman, who is the vacant land is not part of the S A D in your oh, sorry, I'm, I'm pretty loud.
Okay, the the gentleman here, I just wanted to ask him was your proposal says that no vacant land is part of the S A D. Is that, is that correct? Oh, okay. I just wanted to, I I didn't get that clarification. So no, if it doesn't have a house on it, it's not part of the S A D. Do I understand that correctly?
Manager Swayze, and then sir, could we get your name just for the record keeping?
Sorry, Ken Clapp, uh, you put me down as thirty-four seventy-four Goodwood.
Thank you. Manager Swayze, can you?
I can, I can say that there are twenty-five parcels. The two vacant parcels are part of another house. So it's like one house on two lots.
Same owner for all three?
There's two vacant lots, which are owned by the neighboring owners.
Yes, that was really the request we received from the petition that was circulated was that vacant land by duplicate homeowners not be included in the S A D.
Mr. Clapp, does that answer your question?
I just thought that was an interesting point, and I wanted to clarify that, see if I understood it correctly.
And was that the same for both special assessment districts?
It was not.
Okay.
I still make motion to close a public hearing. Support.
Wait. Should we ask our Zoom?
Yes, sorry.
If anyone on participating via Zoom would like to make a public comment during this public hearing, please raise your hand. You can do that if you're on the phone. This is our nine. We have one. Diana Meyer.
Uh, this is Diana Meyer. Are you on the Thornapple River?
No, not yet.
Okay, sorry. Okay, I'll wait.
Thank you for waiting.
I don't think there's anyone else. Thank you.
So that's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Kessel to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there a motion or discussion?
Madam Supervisor, I just want to make a couple of comments. Um, I strongly supported this before because I've I've been part of special assessment districts in a lake up north. Uh, it was just almost destroyed by invasive species. And the treatment uh in our special assessment district was very effective. And I live on the Thornapple River down from the Cascade Dam. We've treated all this year because the invasives have been so bad. And the treatment and the harvesting has been uh really successful. And it's not just for boaters. I mean, I go out in kayaks uh and wake, or not wakeboards, but paddle boards. And we couldn't even get through some areas because the weeds, primarily the invasive species, were so bad. Yeah, um Eurasian milfoil, which has come in on Great Lake ships in the last fifteen years, have been really, really bad. So the treatment, uh, I I think the the good news of the special assessment district is the treatment is very effective and it's good for property owners, and it's good for the river uh ecology. It's also good for property values. And probably um most important, it gives the residents uh some control, as Mr. Coster said, he's been trying for years to get this done. And I did notice it more in the Thorn, obviously, in the Thornapple Assessment District, District, a lot of questions about how this works and primarily concern about the chemical treatments. And I brought a couple of examples that we've done recently where when this is done professionally, and this could only, could only be done professionally, uh certified by the state of Michigan by Eglie, the Department of of Environmental Quality. Um, they post on your property when the treatment's going to occur, usually that day or the day be- before. They tell you what it's going to be treated with, because people said, I read many of the emails, said, what's, what is going to be used in the water? So they they list it out, and they list any potential cautions such as, don't swim for a day, uh, don't irrigate for two days. That's their recommendations. So they list out, and for example, we had one that was just treated on September second. We had a treatment in the Thornapple River below the the Cascade Dam. And there was actually no uh conditions or warnings in that when you could swim, you could irrigate. So it really depends on uh the time of year, the treatment that they use, and if they're doing harvesting or not. So I just wanted people to know who sent a lot of the emails, and I appreciate that. Uh, they were saying, how is this controlled? What is being used? What do we need to be worried about? And that's all posted on your properties if your area is treated. So I just wanted to share that for for both groups. So with that, uh, I I would make a motion to approve the special assessment district for Laramie Lake.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Kessel to approve or confirm the special assessment role um for the Laramie Lake Special Assessment District, number one. Clerk Slater, please call the role.
Trustee Castle.
Yes.
Treasurer Pierce.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Clerk Slater. Yes. Supervisor Lessprints.
Yes. Motion carried. Mr. Costa and everyone else, thank you for your patience and item nine eight, twenty twenty-one, resolution of confirmation of the special assessment role leans payment and collection of special assessments for the Thornapple River Special Assessment District number one. Is there anything you would like to add to this one, Manager Swayze?
I will go through it again, just because it's a a different special assessment district. So uh, this one uh is coming from a petition circulated by members of the Cascade Thornapple River Association to make certain improvements to the Thornapple River, including weed control and removal, debris, debris removal and safety enhancements, silk control and removal, and for the cost of the improvements to be special assessed against each parcel of land within the district. The request is for the cost to be equally assessed against all parcels that front the Thornapple River between uh the dam and Sixtieth Street, uh including those parcels that front township-owned property on the river. Uh, so they requested the special assessment district to be implemented for fifteen years. Total parcel count for the district is three hundred and one, and the requested work to be done is approximately nine thou- ninety thousand three hundred dollars each year, meaning each parcel would be assessed at three hundred dollars uh during the special assessment district. So uh, being moved forward under the same act, public act one eighty-eight uh fifty-four. And again, even though we received the circulated petition, the process is being moved forward on the initiative of the township board, and legally you're not compelled to carry through the special assessment district if you determine it's not in the best interest of the public. Uh, went through the same process, uh originally approved February tenth, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, and then resolutions number three and four were rescinded on May twenty-six as the uh township legal council uh recommended. So again, we will have the public hearing tonight. Um, the public hearing is for the purposes of reviewing the special assessment role and for hearing all persons interested in the special assessment role and the objections to the role. At any time after the public hearing happens, whether it be tonight or at a future meeting, the township board can vote on the uh resolution number four. Right now, it is set up uh to cause the special assessments to be collected in the township winter two thousand twenty-two tax bill. Uh, included the same items in your packet, the resolution for confirmation of the special assessment role, the proposed special assessment role for Thornapple River Special Assessment District number one, the estimated cost and plans, uh the notice of information that was sent in accordance with the S A D process. Uh, if the S A D is established, I would recommend the same ad hoc committee uh that would be established through a resolution that would come to the township board in a future meeting. So if this resolution is approved, it'll accomplish the following. Uh, the rule will be confirmed, including the special assessment installment schedule, uh fifteen years, the interest rate of zero percent, and the delinquency penalty penalty of one percent for each month or fraction thereof. Uh, it sends the same requirements for a public hearing to be held uh if the uh overall cost increase anytime more than ten percent over the entire life of the S A D or the C P I in any single year. Uh, orders a special assessment to be collected with the warrant being transferred from the clerk to the treasurer. Allocates the special assessment on a per parcel basis uh and causes the notification of confirmation to be sent to all parties in the S A D. So if this one is established, it'll produce ninety thousand three hundred dollars per year. And again, those funds are kept in a separate fund and only be utilized for the purposes outlined in the S A D plan documents. If any time the special assessment district is rescinded, if there's any money in that account that needs to be returned to the residents uh on the same allocation basis as it was collected. Move going to public hearing?
Support.
Motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Kessel to open the public hearing for the Thornapple River Special Assessment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Anyone wishing to comment on this special assessment district? Oh, all in favor? And Mr. Manager Swayze?
You voted. So um, I think before we start, I'm going to do the same thing we did with Laramie Lake. In regards to the comments received beforehand, there are significantly more of them. Uh, but again, I don't plan on reading these verbatim, uh just indicating uh yeses or nos uh in reading their name and address into the record. Um, so we'll start out with the yeses, uh including the ones that I was handed tonight. There are seventy-two of these. Uh, so it'll take you a little bit longer for me to get through them. So we have Jeff and Lisa Dion, twenty-nine eighty-four Thornapple River Drive. Shirley and Jeff Hugstra, seventy-two eighty-eight Cascade Road. Charles Whitley, fifty-thirty Sequoia Drive. Aaron Owens, sixty-five hundred Donegal Lane. Jim and Diane Van Hoven, forty-eight sixty-four Sequoia Drive Southeast. Christian and Robin Veenstra, fifty-eighty Sequoia Drive Southeast. Jonathan and Jody Cartman, four-five-five-five Little Harbor Drive. Walter Perschbacher, seventy-four eighty-four Cascade Road. Chris Clark, I believe, seventy-four forty-seven Ken Robb Drive. I will note that some of these names you'll hear twice because they do own two parcels on the river. Uh, so Christopher Clark again, but for seventy-four forty-three Ken Robb Drive Southeast. Ben and Liz Greenman, sixty-nine thirty-one Burger Drive. Barbara Skinner, thirty-twenty-four Thornapple River Drive. Sorry, I'll try to talk into the microphone. Harry Herbrook, seventy-three forty Cascade Road Southeast. Harry Herbrook, seventy-three fourteen Cascade Road Southeast. Clarence and Elizabeth Manning, forty-five sixty-seven Little Harbor Drive. Jack and Julie Boss, thirty-ninety-five Thorncrest Drive Southeast. Kurt Ballow, eighteen seventy-four Beard Drive. Justus Bowazur, thirty-four eighty-six Goodwood Drive Southeast. Scott and Hazel Rissy, seventy-two thirty-eight Cascade Road. Megan Rissy, thirty-two sixteen Thorncrest Drive Southeast. Doug and Christina Bauer, thirty-one seventy-seven Thorncrest Southeast. Eric and Helen Hanson, no address given. Dan and Vita Eisenz, seventy-four or seventy-one, I can't tell, seven-one seven-seven Aquafria Court Southeast. Morgan and Jacqueline Cole, sixty-seven seventeen Burger Drive. Richard Horvitz, eighteen sixty Beard Drive. Kingsland, seventy-three seventy Cascade Road. David and Truss Tracy Prindaville, four-nine nine-four Sequoia Drive Southeast. Edward T. Quinn, also known as Ned, seventy-three eighty-two Whispering Ridge Drive Southeast. Tim and Heather Workma, thirty-five sixteen Goodwood Drive Southeast. Dick Donker, sixty-eight twenty-five Burger Drive. Robert Olman, seventy-six thirty-five Sandy Hollow Southeast. Dale Reidsma, seventy-seven eighty-six Thornapple Bayou. Jennifer Walters, seventy-three twenty Whispering Ridge. Torrin and Brenda Scott, forty-five ninety-three Little Harbor Drive. Amy Dowling, thirty-five twenty-eight Goodwood Drive Southeast. David Runthog, seventy-two seventy-one Kilmer Southeast. David and Kristen Hecht, seventy-three hundred Cascade Road Southeast. Ally M. Merthwally, seventy-four forty-four Whispering Ridge Street Southeast. Jim and Sherry Stein, seventy-one sixty-nine Placida Court Southeast. Stephen and Cheryl Timian, seventy-four fifteen Kenroy Drive Southeast. Dwight G. Frey, seventy-two sixty-one Kilmer Southeast. Joseph and Elizabeth Junewick, sixty-five seventy-seven Burger Drive. Jeff and Amanda Carpenter, fifty sixteen Sequoia Drive. Paul and Leanne Rowland, seventy-one seventy-six Aquafria Court Southeast. Jay Chow, seventy-six seventy-five Sandy Hollow Lane Southeast. Russell Scott and Mary Beth Weber, seventy-five eighty-four Goodwood Drive Southeast. Michael Vahent and three-eight-eight-eight Goodwood Drive Southeast. M. E. Bill Butts, forty-eight ninety-six Sequoia Drive Southeast. Ken and Judy Carpenter, sixty-six eighty-one Burger Drive Southeast. James and Chris Brundage, thirty-four sixty-two Goodwood Drive Southeast. Kermit and Carol Starkweather, seventy-eight hundred Thornapple Bayou Drive Southeast. Shirley Nightsole, fifty sixty Sequoia Southeast. Karen Robertson, forty-five thirty-five Little Harbor Drive. Chris and Barb Ritzma, nineteen, I apologize, this one is Laramie Lake. Um, Chris and Barb Ritzma, uh, at nineteen seventy-five Laramie by Drive did have yes, by the way. I apologize. That was an oversight on my part. Uh, John and Diana Meyer, thirty-four forty-four Goodwood Drive Southeast. Included some pictures. Mary Lyndon Reagan's, seventy-one sixty-eight Cascade Road. Herb and Sharon Latinge, seventy-three fifty-eight Cascade Road. Todd A. Hendricks, seventy-one thirty-eight Cascade Road. Thomas Powell, fifty ninety Sequoia Drive Southeast. Don and Laura Finelli, seventy-three seventy-eight Cascade Road. Jake and Jenny Baugh, forty-one twenty-one Maricabo Shores Drive Southeast. Rick and Kristen Veldman, sixty-nine sixty-five Burger Drive Southeast. S. J. and Rusty Trap, seventy-four hundred Whispering Ridge Street Southeast. Richard and Lynn Westrate, thirty-ten Thornapple River Drive Southeast. Michael and Sheila Reed, seventy-two seventy-five Sixtieth Street Southeast. Uh, these were some of the ones that were uh not sent to you uh in the two o'clock uh uh communication you received. Brenda Scott, forty-five ninety-three Little Harbor Drive Southeast. Robin Rensbrink, forty-six thirty-seven Little Harbor Southeast. Sally Munford, fifty twenty Sequoia. Craig Hensh- Henhill, forty-nine sixty-eight Sequoia Drive. William and Julie Lewis, seventy-three ten Kilmer Drive Street Southeast and seven-three eleven Kilmer Street Southeast. Heather Harrington and Alexander Duthler, seven-seven one-four Thornapple Bayou Drive Southeast. That Vamis Petrie, uh, thirty thirty-two Thornapple River Drive Southeast. Uh, so those were all of the surveys that we received in favor. Uh, there were eleven surveys that we received that were opposed. Christine Bosco Ling, sixty-nine eighty-five Burger Drive Southeast. Jeff and Lori Gottlieb, seventy-one hundred Cascade Road Southeast. Uh, we did receive one that did have not have a name or address, but was not uh was not in support of the S A D. Pete and Judy Kenny, fifty-six hundred Alaska Avenue. Aline Duty, thirty-two eighty-four Thorncrest Southeast. David Finkelstein, sixty-seven fifty-five Burger Drive. Dawn Van Hoven and Jennifer Schlandmeyer, thirty fifty-nine Thorncrest. Albert, Josh and Carol Sears, sixty-six twenty-five Burger Drive. Michael Erica Hoy, thirty-four fifty-two Goodwood Drive Southeast. Mike and Debbie Weigard, seventy-two forty-three Kilmer Drive Southeast. Asif and Tahira Azim, seventy one ten Cascade Road Southeast. So those were the surveys we received. We did receive. Twenty four emails as well, and these were evenly split, twenty two yes and twenty two no. They're not in order, so I'll read the name and the address and whether or not they supported. So I will also note that there are people that we got emails from to fill out surveys as well, so you can't necessarily add them together, which is why I kept them separate. We have Hazel Reecey, seventy two thirty eight Cascade Road in support. We have Brent and Shelley Smith at seventy four seventy eight Cascade Road that are in support. We have James Brundage with no address given that is in support. We have Cheryl Damato at sixty eight sixty four Maple Chris Drive Southeast that is in support. We have Peter Kenny and Judith Kenny at fifty six hundred Alaska Avenue that are not in support. We have Dawn Swider at seventy three thirty five Kilmer Southeast that is not in support. We have Peg McEwen at seventy two thirty one Kilmer Drive Southeast that is not in support. We have Richard and Loretta Osborne at seventy three forty nine Kilmer Street Southeast that is not in support. We have Paul and Luanne Strauss at seventy four seventy four Alaska Ridge that is not in support. We have Greg Nowitzki at Greg and Sarah Nowitzki at fifty one hundred Sequoia Drive Southeast that is in support. We have John Meyer. At, I don't see an address, but is in support. We have Melissa. And Mark Ellenboss that are in support. We have Rob Bayan, who has property at thirty one forty eight Thornapple River Drive that is not in support. We have Rob Bayan that has property at forty four forty five Whitneyville Avenue that is not in support. We have Gretchen and Jim Smelday at twenty nine eighty five Thornapple River Drive Southeast that is not in support. We have Christopher Savboda at thirty four eighty six Goodwood that is in support. We have Dorian and Kelsey Baco. At seventy seven eighty four Thornapple Bayou Drive Southeast that is not in support. We have Dan Cantarowski at seventy one eighty six Cascade Road that is not in support. We have Mark Andrew Cowitz, that is seventy thrive seventy three sixty five Kilmer Street that is not in support. We have Michael Wygand. At seventy two forty three Kilmer Drive, Mike and Debbie Wygand at seventy two forty three Kilmer Drive that is not in support. We have Darwin Cutler at forty eight eighty four at Sequoia Drive that is in support. We have Jeff Radio and Mary Kunkler at fifty nine sixty nine Cannon Court Southeast that are in support. And we have Brett Parent at seventy two eighty one Kilmer Street Southeast that is in support. Those are all the communications that we received prior to the meeting tonight.
Are we in public hearing? Did we vote on that? So anyone wishing to speak, please state your name and address and. Because it's such a hot topic, I'll try to be strict about the three minutes.
Great, I'm William Lewis from seventy three eleven Kilmer Street, seventy three ten Kilmer Street. And I'm in favor of the sad. I would like to have a shout out for the Thornapple Cascade River Association. I've lived on the river off and on since nineteen ninety one, one nineteen ninety one, when I moved over from Chicago. Had a little three year, two or three year hiatus down in Tennessee and I came back. Bought an empty lot on the river and then eventually moved back where I could use the river, so I've been on the river. For quite a number of years and I've been a member of the River Association off and on during that time. Get lazy and don't always pay my fees, but. I have, I just want to say they have always every year done things to improve the river. Whether it's helping neighbors, whether it's moving things that floods have moved into the river. Whether it's putting navigation buoys on the river. And they've always been very open to hear anyone that lives on the river in that section of the rivers comments. And they have meetings every year and invite comments and they've been very helpful. To me and to many other people and I've helped my neighbors, my neighbors have helped me. Whether it's weeds or. Obstructions that move down the river during a flood or whatever. And it's a good community of people that talk to one another and that have input. And if you're not a member of the River Association, I encourage you to be a member. And to give input. Because it's a good group and I'm glad that they put this sad together now, I don't have any navigation issues in front of my property. And I don't like to pay taxes, but I do pay taxes, but I'm happy to support this because I think it's good for the river. And it's good for my neighbors and so anyway, I'm in support.
Thank you.
I'm Mike Elmasian. My address is seventy two fifty nine Sixtieth Street. And I support the special assessment, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, my name's Lori Gottlieb, I live at seventy one hundred Cascade Road. And I've got two things I'd talk, somebody Gretchen Smeldy asked me to read this for her on her behalf, so it's for Gretchen and Jim Smeldy. Twenty nine eighty five Thornapple River Drive. To whom it may concern and all others in the township. That are wanting to increase your expenses and taxes when it's possible that there could be a federal grant to help cost of the weeding situation. Also, doesn't it seem counterproductive to have a special assessment for this cause? When there's such a huge PFAS situation with drinking water? And the obvious overflow from the airport into the rivers as well. From the, is, I'm sorry. Is there's, yeah, from, is there, I'm sorry, is the airport in the river as well as the registered PFAS? There isn't enough proof that this will even help the weeding situation, maybe for ADA since it's a stout river. My family has a home on a lake and the weeding spray doesn't help the lake. We still feel that the only taxing the people that own the property on the river. Is absurd since those people are not the only ones using the river. I know of several people that use the river do not own property on it. The township spent millions of dollars on property on the river, twenty eight ninety four Thornapple River Drive. The Doctors by Castle Park and Tuffy Car Repair Property. Those properties may or may not have needed to be purchased. It's clear that the township does have the money to help with this type of situation. It doesn't have to come from additional tax costs that can be increased. That can increase on only river property owners. Please consider passing this silly special assessment during uncertain times of a pandemic. And so many other possible hardships to come. Thank you for hearing and listening to my concerned neighbors, river property owners. The special assessment tax is unnecessary and untimely. Kind regards Gretchen and Jim. And then for myself, I'd like to address you guys. When I listen to the Laramie Lake. Assessment is brought to you first by the homeowners. It's not an association. The body of water is contained and the house is surrounded. And the costs were known and shared with the owners prior. This special assessment is proposing improvements that are unnecessary. It's saying there's. Impediments. Weeds, but it's not evident where I live, where the master crafts, speedboats, the jet skis and the pontoons speed by every day. The assessment also says it has to be proposed to improve corresponding assessments and increase the market value. It's not going to increase the market value of a lot of properties. It also has to be processed with reasonable thresholds to move forward. In the earlier, in the earlier petitions dredging was in there. It was taken out. We've seen in the minutes from the River Association that five thousand dollars was the cost for the weeding. Now they want ninety thousand.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. The Point Golf Course has seven thousand feet of frontage. Maricaybo Shores has forty five homes that let their family and relatives, friends use it, boat accesses. And I guess just to sort of sum it up, I don't like the chemicals either. But trustee Shepley, last in February, you said such a nice thing, you said that it's pitting neighbor against neighbor and it is. I'd much rather see you guys just hold off on this, I know they did a lot of work, they want it, but it's association, it's not coming from the homeowner, homeowners. We. We, we can, we've never offered like to have a cleanup crew. Rogue River does that all the time, this is just thrown out during a pandemic during Labor Day and. It's an association driving it with homeowners and if they contribute maybe three hundred, there's forty thousand from the association. So they could put their money where their mouth is, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Kim Branoff and it's Chris and Kim Branoff and it's fifty seven eleven Alaska Avenue. And Alto and I actually sent in a questionnaire, actually a few days ago, but obviously didn't get there yet, so we definitely. Oh, sorry, we definitely support it. And I actually am a national water skier and my sole purpose of moving down the river twenty five years ago was to water ski. And when we first moved down. I probably skied six days a week in the summertime, this year I've been on the river two times, two. And that's because it, our whole lift and all around our lift is surrounded by weeds and it literally takes us. Hours to get the little weed island off our lift and try to drag, most of it I tried to drag it on shore so it doesn't go down river. But a lot of it just islands go down river because you know, we can't get it all on shore. So we basically have not even used the river and that's the only reason we're living there is because I wanted to water ski. But maybe this young lady over here can come and maybe help me around before I water ski. Come over and help me because by the time I get done getting all the weeds off, it usually is my back's too sore to ski anyway, so. We are one million percent in favor of of getting rid of the weeds and I think same thing for the property values. And if you look out, I mean, before it's beautiful looking out on the river and now it's just weeds, I mean, it's big islands, heavy big islands. And and it's just, you know, not worth it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Clarence Marring and I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my wife Elizabeth Marring, we reside at four, five, six, seven Little Harbor Drive Southeast. We're relatively new residents and we like the previous speakers are homeowners. And we are relative, and we were one of the few homers when we first moved in, we were relatively weed free also. But this year our weeds are significantly increased and I appreciate trustee McDonald's statements about the weeds and the treatment thereof and the information that he provided us. It's very apropos and we're fully in support of that and I'm concerned that the weed situation. Has kind of, kind of achieved a kind of a tipping point. And I think to be addressing this, to delay it further, we would be caught, cost additional time and effort and would jeopardize our ability to control them. On our segment of the river and for us to be good neighbors for those downriver of us and the dam. So I'd appreciate your support for this sad district, thank you.
Thank you.
Dave and Marcia Runthog. At seven two seven one Kilmer. We've been on the river for fifty three years. Every year the weeds are getting worse. It's especially the last, oh, I'd say six, seven years. Last year, I would guess this year the weeds have doubled in our area. And I pulled quite a few of them, so I know how many are there, I mean, it's boatload. But I appreciate the Thornapple Association and what they're doing and you folks for hearing us, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Parent, it's seventy four hundred Trillium Wood. And my husband and I are neighbors of Kim and Chris Branoff, so we are right. We are a five minute walk to Sixtieth, which is the divine line between Cascade Township and Caledonia Township. And that is probably the narrowest part of the river. And what people do that are upriver from us, they cut, they cut the weeds, you know, so they can get their boats in and out. And then they come floating down and that's why everybody has a problem. And I don't know if those weeds will still, you know, still keep growing if they attach themselves to something, but that is what, that is a big problem where we are.
Thank you.
My name is Ken Clapp. I have two properties, twenty nine eighty eight Thornapple River Drive and thirty four seventy four Goodwood. For legal purposes, for the tax tribunal, I'm dead set against this SAD. On the record. Ben, what are my taxes on twenty nine eighty eight this year or this assessment? On the bottom there.
Now we had to answer that supervisor.
Yes, please.
So the total tax bill is a hundred and forty five dollars and seventy three cents, there's administration fee of one dollar and forty five cents. So the entire amount due is one forty seven eighteen.
Okay, that's my tax bill, folks, a hundred and forty seven, a hundred and forty seven dollars. You want three hundred, is that fair? I own hell house, it's a twenty five foot lot, twenty five by twenty five, no house, no nothing, it's vacant. I can't even get, I can't even get to the river, I asked Ben Peterson to let me build a little house on there, he thought I was crazy. I asked him, I said, Ben, can I build a little house on there? And, and, and Mr. Shipley is absolutely right, John's absolutely right, we're putting neighbor against neighbor here. I have another piece of property on, on Goodwood thirty four seventy four Goodwood. Not a weed in sight. Never had a weed problem there, water runs through, not a problem. But that's, that's fine, it's twenty feet deep there, let it come, I mean, that's fine. I don't have, I, I don't have a problem, I'll take care of my own property, I've been able to take care of myself my whole life. So I started out in a farm and I pulled weeds there, I can pull weeds in the river. Who, who owns the Thornapple River? Can anybody tell me? Who owns the Thornapple River? The township? No, it's a public trust. And who manages the Thornapple River? Can anybody tell me that? The state manages, Eagle manages it, the township manages it, there's a part of Michigan Department of the. EGLE, I think it's called, I won't go through a name, you have to, I mean, you're going to dredge over there? You gotta ask them for their permission. It says you guys are going to dredge in here, you better get your permits. Section three oh one, you have to have a permit. They may not let you even dredge in part of that, some of the weeds over there may be invasive, some of them may be protected. You've got to ask them to pull the weeds out, you can't just go out there and dig around and pull the weeds out. I think Mr. McDonald pointed out in his deal that the state said it was okay. Is that true, Tom? Okay, so you have to go to the state and get it approved to have what kind of weeds and what you can do and what you can't do. It isn't the township's business. It's the homeowner's business and it's the state of Michigan's business, the township has zoning laws, what you can. The township, you have, township has zoning laws and sanitation laws and all that, it's not the township's job to manage the Thornapple River. It's the, it's the township's job to make sure that, that your, your sewer's not running into it, you're not building too close. And, and that kind, yeah, because you don't like, you don't like what I'm saying and, and, and.
Time.
The, the thing is, you're taking a simplistic approach and saying, okay, let's just wipe out three hundred people. Why don't you do it on square footage, why don't you do it on riverfront footage? Big problem here. In this area. In this area, everybody wants to throw fertilizer all over the place. Lots of nitrogen floating around. All feeding the weeds in the river. There are certain agents, I spoke to Mr. Swayze today, and I'll give you the names of places and different kinds of fertilizer you can use to have less nitrogen problems. That's where your weed's coming from. Also, the, the salt that we're putting on the roads that we put here in the winter time that drain down, drain down, that's, that's also a problem. So there are, there are solutions. This is a very complex problem. I would say you should table this and look at the complexity of the problem before you vote on it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, pardon me, I'm Jeff Coffey. I own property at fifty nine twenty three Tenon Court. It is a unimproved piece of property. And so I love this river. It's a great place. I have a lot of fun on it. Had a lot of fun on it with Buckson's butt nineteen eighty five. But I think the way things are being assessed is not correct. I take good care of my property. I don't have any nitrogen. I don't put anything into the river. Golf course, they're assessed the same amount as I am. They are a major polluter, both in terms of the nitrogen, in terms of the runoff from the airport itself. I'm, I just object to the way the whole thing's being funded. So bottom line, my vote is no. I think the work needs to be done, but the funding should be looked at in a different route. I think we should look for money from the proceeds from the dam, power generation. Anyway, that's my vote. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is John Vanderweil. Own property at forty eight twelve and forty eight sixteen Sequoia. One of my parcels is also small. It's only fifteen feet wide. But we do enjoy using it. My son and I built a boat a couple of years ago and it's very difficult. And at this point, it's just about impossible to get the boat in the water and out into the water way to use it. So we are in support of the sad.
Hello, my name is Jeff Radio. I live at five nine six nine Tenon Court in Elto. Mary Kunkler and I have been on the river since two thousand and thirteen. Appreciate all the work that the Thornapple River Association has done to help maintain the river, getting volunteer help to clear the river. But we have noticed substantial increase in weeds since we've been there since two thousand and thirteen. One of the questions I have is the weeds that are in the river, some of which may be noninvasive, considered noninvasive. So your comment was taking care of the weeds. It seemed to be working someplace where you were. I'm curious to know how you will handle weeds that are in my area. Sixtieth Street is terrible. I mean, it's impassable. So I'm curious to know if you put effort into this, I'd like to make sure that it takes care of the weeds in our area. Number one. Number two, the, it seems to be that there's going to be silt removal, you know, logs, deadheads to make it safer. Totally agree with that. Makes total sense. How curious about having rocks removed in the middle of the river up at Sixtieth Street. They've been moved before. So it's an unnatural view. If you go there when the river's down, it's obvious that they've been moved with some heavy equipment. It would be great to clear them out of the way so that the river is more usable for other boaters. So much weeds and silt along the edge of the river is making the river, in my opinion, more narrow and more shallow. Making it more, you know, a tighter passageway for boaters, whether it's kayak, canoe, or powerboat. So cleaning up the edge of the river, the weeds would make it more passable and safer for everybody, everybody's use. We are very much in support of SAD. And again, would like to thank the Thornapple River Association for what they've done to help maintain the river for all of us that live on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christian Rissy. I live at seventy two thirty eight Cascade Road. I support the SAD because I can't swim at my friend's house because there are too many weeds and we have to swim in the middle of the river, which is very dangerous. I have been swimming in the river my whole life and have never seen weeds at my dock until this summer.
Thank you.
Hi, I don't think I want to go after that.
No, sorry about, sorry in advance.
My name's Tom Powell. We live at fifty ninety Sequoia. We just moved in, in May. So I don't have all the history that everybody does, but we, we love Cascade. Love being on the river. Want to thank the board for all you've done to develop Cascade. And thank you to all my neighbors that I haven't met yet, but we, we hope to in the next few months. But yeah, I'm a homeowner. You know, I pay four thousand dollars in summer taxes, something like that. And I don't have any objection to paying another three hundred dollars for the river. To me, it's the most valuable asset that Cascade has. It certainly increases all the property values on the river. I just bought one, so I know, I know that I probably paid more for it, but that was okay. That's, that's what we wanted. But I've been, you know, very concerned as everybody else with, with weeds. We're on Sequoia, which is a heavily weeded area. Be glad to take my neighbor on a tour to sit, to see what it's like to get through. They're very difficult to boat. I did have the, was fortunate enough to meet a log on the river with my propeller. So I had that experience and so I know what, what areas need to be cleaned up. And I, and I, you know, from what I've seen, I think the association does a great job. But I think it's, it's case, it's a volunteer organization. It's just not big enough to, to tackle this problem. And it needs help and it needs an organization of a SAD implemented. We had that in a lake we're on in northern Michigan, you know, as you did, it worked great. Two of the cleanest lakes in Michigan with weed control and debris and so forth. So, so again, I appreciate everything everybody's done. But I, I think it's time to stop kicking the can down the road though and to get this thing voted on and decided before it gets even worse.
Thank you. Welcome to Cascade.
Hi, Jim Petrie, thirty thirty two Thornapple River Drive Southeast. We've lived on the river since two thousand and four. And a lot of the people here, some of them will notice me. I'm always out bass fishing. And I've watched this thing fall apart, the river, the cover of the weeds. For the last, oh, well, since beginning. If you go about a mile north of the railroad trestle, you can't. I have a bass boat. You can't do it. You've got the rocks, which are always there, but the reeds have gone and gone. They're double what they were last year. Probably four times what they were three or four years ago. Now you don't see it down by the dam. It's deeper, fifteen to eighteen feet. There's a lot of traffic down there, skiing and so on. But as you go up, upriver for the people that live upriver from there, you're faced with, with a lot of things that are going to happen. The river isn't going to be available to you. Several people have mentioned, she, little girl, young lady, excuse me, couldn't swim. Another person couldn't get his boat in that they made. It's coming. It's marching right down river toward the, the dam. And I don't know, I'm not that skilled at this or knowledgeable, what happens when it gets fourteen or sixteen feet deep. Is it will from the large area where everybody skis and so. But if you don't do something, and three hundred dollars a year isn't much to pay for continuing with the recreation and the beauty of the river. Thanks.
Thank you.
Chuck Whitley, fifty thirty Sequoia Drive. I apologize for not saying that earlier, my previous comments. There, there's two things that I want to kind of mention here and that there's been some lightning rod issues involved. And one of them was the ten percent cap thing, which has finally been clarified on the August eleventh minutes. And so a lot of people were concerned that even though it was not the intent and it was no way going to happen, they were very concerned. And I guess I can understand why they would be of this thing is going to get out of control, some out of, you know, off the rails commissioners after you would come in and raise the rate, you know, every year. That has been clarified is not going to happen. It was never the original intent. So that particular lightning rod should be off the table. The other lightning rod issue is the railroad bridge. I was here during the drafting of the original petition language. I was not in favor of the railroad bridge thing at the time, but there was some counsel given to us that put everything in there that you might possibly do so that you don't have any restrictions on what could be done down the road. But since that time and since the petitions were, were put out, there has essentially been zero interest in railroad bridge bypassing. You know, it was in the original, you know, language on the petitions. It has been struck from everything that has occurred after that point because there just has not been the support for it. So, you know, dredging around a railroad bridge is not going to happen. It is very unpopular. It will not happen and it's not that, you know, you've got funds and so by golly, we've got, we've got to do this. You don't have to do it. And so, you know, it's, it's a lightning ride issue that people have. I understand their concern about this sort of thing. But it is not a reasonable thing that a wealth-founded commission, you know, and the, the oversight boards and stuff that are created are not going to allow that to happen. It's just not going to happen. So, you know, let's get down and stick to our knitting. We're here to, to take care of the safety issues. We're here to take care of the weeds. And, and that's really what this is all about. And whatever's left over, you know, there, there's, there's some reason to believe that partnerships will form and that various, you know, bayous will in fact be improved. But that's going to take some time and it's going to take commitment from a lot of other resources and not just this three hundred dollars. This three hundred dollars is not going to get you an empty bayou in front of your, your yard. It's going to take some cooperation between maybe the state, maybe the township, maybe some other entity. But this is a foot in the door and it provides solid funding for maintenance of the Thornapple River. And we all should be behind that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Hazel Rissy. I live at seventy two thirty eight Cascade Road. I just have some examples of some issues with weeds in other lakes too, or in Michigan. One is not. July tenth, two thousand and eighteen, Lansing State Journal had an article about Keegan Rouser, fourteen years old from North Carolina, visiting his family in Eaton County to say goodbye to grandpa who had died the week before. He had swam in a pond and his mom says, I knew he was tangled up in the weeds before they ever found him. It took emergency personnel three hours to find him. April nineteenth, twenty nineteen, ABC News, twelve out of Flint, Michigan. Sixty-three-year-old man drowned in Saginaw Bay while cleaning weeds and repairing his dock that Friday afternoon. His name was Kenneth Wolanski. August fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, and this is in Omaha World Herald, an Omaha man drowned, Brandon Urban, forty-one years old, after his son fell off a paddleboard and became tangled in the weeds. The father drowned after he saved his son. I just hope that it doesn't take any of our friends, family, loved ones drowning from weeds until, or until it gets as bad as Lurway Lake, that we make this decision to do this. I hate for, you know, we've had, waited for a traffic accident for people that before that traffic light signal gets in. I think this is important and it needs to happen. And I think, you know, they talk about the size of parcels, but the river, it's six miles and we all have access to all six miles of it. So I think each parcel being excess three hundred dollars is fair. And I agree with Chuck that the, this opens us up to grants, that list of what we can do in this is, is allows us to do it if we can find the money with state or township or other funds. But if it's not on there, we can't do it. And so although my examples are emotional, I ask that you actually look at the numbers of the number of people that are in support of this versus the number that are not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. My name is Mark Oberlin. My wife Kathy is with me tonight. Good evening. Just wanted to show our unequivocal support for the SAD. We've been river dwellers for over twenty years, have owned several properties. And every time we pay taxes, we grimace and cut the check, but it's well worth it. The extra three hundred dollars or whatever this is going to be is a investment well worth it. If anybody has lived on the river, they know that the river is sick. It needs help. The debris from lumber and silt and what have you caused by man-made and or, you know, natural sources, doesn't really matter. It is here now and I, as a volunteer or with the Thornapple Association, I think at last count, less than half the people that own property were supporting the voluntary dues. So now the bill is due. People need to step up, I think, and pay their fair share, whatever that means. But if you live on the river, own a piece of property, enjoy the appreciation, it's time to pitch in and help clean this river up. So while the Cascade Township is not responsible for the river, you folks have the authority to create a conduit to allow people that perhaps haven't been sharing in the cost to do so. And so that's why we support this SAD one hundred percent. Thank you.
Two years, like I said before, but here's the thing. Do we need ninety thousand dollars a year to do a little weeding? Really? Do we read ninety thousand dollars every year for fifteen years? I'm not going to pay for all of it because I won't be here all fifteen. But here's the thing is, I would donate money if they had a right cause. But I want to spend my forty two hundred dollars for forty five. I don't want somebody to tell me how to spend it.
Sir, can we get your name just for our record keeping? Sorry. Sir. Okay, we're all set. Thank you.
My name is Ned Quinn. I lived at, live at seventy three eighty-two Whisper Bridge. I moved on the river in two thousand and four, was part of the C T R A board for four years. I'm pleased to state that I see about five or six members of the board when I was on it here tonight. During two thousand and five to two thousand and nine, we, we attempted to set up a SAD with the county. That attempt was all of the watershed, so it included people off water and it looked at per square foot of land parcel based on your assessment. Okay, at that time, when you're going that far off water, we had a very, I would say, probably ten percent approval rate. Right now, and I've done my kind of counting and where we're at. So far, we've had fifteen people come up and say, I support it. We've had five people say, no. You're not going to make everybody happy. This is something that the Rivers Association, excuse me, has been working on for twenty years. Please vote yes.
Thank you.
My name is David Hekt. I'm at seventy three hundred Cascade Road Southeast. I'm here with my wife Christie. And I just want to express my support for the Special Assessment District. We've been on the river now for four summers. And up until this summer, we have had no weeds in front of our house and I've been very much. And up until this summer, we have had no weeds in front of our house and I've been very much in support of the SAD because I didn't want weeds. In front of my house. Now we have them. So I just asked that you act on this and you act on this now. It's a little disappointing that we aren't able to treat the weeds this summer because of some of the delays. So. I would very much appreciate your support for the Special Assessment District and act now. And, and take care of some of the weed problems that are, are just getting much, much worse as everybody has expressed. And I'm here to echo as well. So thank you very much for your time and would appreciate your support on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie Gores, such 3044 Thornapple River Drive, looking forward to being in that property again finally. And I'm definitely in favor of the Special Assessment District. I was also on the Thornapple River Association Board. The first time we got this passed, I guess. And now we're coming through again. I also agree it's time to get this done. I do think some fine points have been made and it was fairly brave, Mrs. Golly, to get up there and say that. It is at least partly township, county, state responsibility. Mr. Clapp was correct. It's not our river, but somebody's got to do something. And I think if the Cascade Thornapple River Association. Made up entirely of homeowners with waterfront property wants to foot the bill, then that should be allowed. I also think the township, county and state could pitch in and if we can get some grant money, that would be awesome. It is important. You all know it's important. It's right there in the logo. It's a beautiful river.
To think, I always wondered what that logo was. Good evening. My name is Jeff Carpenter. My wife Amanda and myself reside at 5016 Sequoia Drive. Just a couple of comments. I've, I've been on this river on and off since 1978. That dates me at 43 years old to the summer and. We just, we recently purchased property in 2014 on Sequoia. There was not a weed in sight. And in seven years, it has gone to completely unsustainable. In fact, young lady that spoke earlier was actually speaking, her friend is my daughter. And they cannot swim. They actually swim in the middle of the river in boat traffic because there are just too many weeds. It's impossible. And that's in four feet of water. This summer, I was examining to the north, so it's kind of odd because it's north as you go down river. By the expressway, I found weeds growing in eight to nine feet of water using a stick. So it's coming. It's multiplying. It's exponential. It's logarithmic, whatever you want to say. The problem is exacerbating over time and we just need to do something. I am the Secretary on the Association. I've been part of this process. I've been the one writing a lot of the messages that you all receive, so. Thank you for reading them along with my colleagues. And, you know, as a voluntary association, we bring in several thousand dollars a year. And we have one big spring event like we had a couple of years ago where we have massive 20 and 30 and 40 foot logs coming down the water. We spent $5,000 in one day. It costs $5,000 a day to clear debris out of the river using the number one company in West Michigan. That's not sustainable. So when we talk about debris removal, safety enhancements, clearly the weeds are an issue, but I want to talk about debris and safety. That comes in waves. You don't know. Sometimes there's nothing. This summer, there wasn't really anything. Two summers ago, we spent $5,000 in one day. So that's where this over time. I guess a final two comments I would make is that, you know, this is a generational issue. We talk about legacy. We talk about passing property, property real, they call it real estate. It's, it's real value, right? So this is a once in a generation opportunity to pay it forward for when we aren't here, right? And it's a pilot project. This is not in perpetuity. We're asking for 15 years. And you, as the board and your predecessors, if, if you're not in this position in the future, can change that. You can vote, you can hold hearings, you can adjust it, you can cancel it after five years if it just isn't working. It's a pilot project, but it's the right pilot project. Final statement, I would like you to vote this evening. Manager Swayze said you had several options that you could take tabling it. Give us a vote. We've been patient. We turned in petitions two years ago. We just want to vote and we appreciate it and we support. Thank you.
Hi, my name is, my name is Carl Mast. I live at 7796 Thornapple Bayou. Here in support of the SAD. I sent you all emails with my support. And documentation of what's happened to the river the last five to seven years. Last two or three have gotten progressively worse. Safety, boating, et cetera. The Thornup River represents the single biggest asset of our township that we all love and. Having it become more and more infested with weeds decreases the value of the river, does not help properties, values along the river. Some of them down closer to the dam, not a big deal yet, but it's getting worse each year as you work your way up towards 60th. If I'm going to buy a house and I see it full of weeds out in front, just sign neglect. So I think it's in the township's best interest to be in support of this and I know my wife and I here are in support of it.
Thank you.
My name is Todd Schardt, 7788 Thornapple Bayou Drive. As long as we can use the river, I'm in complete support of the Special Assessment District. Completely agree with everything everybody has said here. It is for houses that front the river. We happen to be in the bayou and every rain that we get. We have to question whether we'll be able to get out onto the river. And so I know some of my neighbors have had to moor their boat across the river because I can't get them in and out of the bayou anymore. And so as long as we can get in and out of the river, I completely support it, but if we cannot, I feel that we should not have to pay the tax. Thank you.
Good evening. Sean Burkett on Thornapple Bayou. Firstly, I'm in full support of the program. Scott's worked his butt off to get this this far and a bunch of other people. However, one condition that concerns me, I have kind of a unique situation where I have three consecutive parcels, two of which are vacant and. Are borderline unbuildable and very small, which means that I get then to get assessed the 900 instead of the 300. Is there any, you know, kind of like Lurway Lake scenario? Is there any option to change it toward that where it's, if there's contiguous, contiguous parcels, it's one assessment?
Can I can, we can answer that question. Probably should wait until board comments, but if you want, in my understanding is no, how it's presented, the board does not have that authority to make that change right now.
Okay.
We can, but there's, hopefully it'll explain it and if, and if we haven't fully explained it, all of us, then. Raise your hand and it'll remind me to walk it through as best we can. And if our understandings are different, if we get something off, just we'll try to flush it fully out for everybody.
Hi, Ron Hudson, 7165 Aquafree Court. I've had the benefit of growing up on the Thornapple River. My folks having owned seven different homes along the river during my lifespan. And it was the highlight of my summer as a child, being able to take full advantage of it. My particular property that I have now, we do not have accessibility due to sediment that has come down river over time. I still support this assessment in full. We do access the river to swim. We do access the river for kayaking and canoeing. My kids. Are fortunate enough to have friends along the river that they get to enjoy time, swimming, tubing, skiing. Taking full advantage like I did as a child. We would love the opportunity at some time to be able to clear space out from the little bayou that we're in to allow for boating. But that's not a priority for us at this point. Knowing that this will benefit everyone along the river and it was mentioned generationally is really the key here. So again, I stand in full support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy Dowling, 3528 Goodwood. Just quick, I know that nothing's perfect. I know there are people that would like little things changed, but since there's no way to quickly make a little adjustment like they just asked. Yes, I want you to vote tonight. But I want that vote to be a yes or a for and not a no because there'd be. We need to do a couple of different changes because we cannot kick the bucket another year or two, just so we can make a couple of people happy that might have a vacant lot. So that was it. Thank you. We can't, we can talk about it.
Good evening. Scott Rissy, 7238 Cascade Road. I guess I, I wanted to mention a couple of things. First off, somebody said that nobody organizes a cleanup on the river and I just thought I'd let people know that the. Thornapple Watershed Council is actually doing a kayak cleanup on our stretch of the river on September 18th. And that information is on their website. That happens annually. So that does happen. The, there's been a lot of, a lot of concerns about, you know, or people saying homeowners can take care of these things on their own. And I'd just like to highlight a concern that I have and, and that is if we have a bunch of homeowners. Treating weeds in front of their homes that are not, oh, should I say properly educated on how to do that? We could have a bigger problem than we would if we engaged with professionals to treat the weeds in the river. The professionals are licensed with the, the, with Eagle, with the state and they follow all of the protocols that the state requires. And if we have a bunch of homeowners out there on the weekend trying to treat weeds, I think we could actually have a negative effect. On the quality of the river. The other thing I wanted to mention is several people have brought up concerns about dredging. And with dredging bayous and their bayous are filling in. There was a gentleman earlier that spoke about. The bayou in front of his home had been dredged years ago and filled back in and, and one of the components of this. SAD that we have been talking about is sediment controls. And the reason is because if you're going to dredge a bayou, it's going to fill back in. The first step in the process needs to be to control the silt and sediment that's coming down the stream. And whether, what, what the techniques are and what the state allows will be determined when we get there. But there's funds here to put sediment controls in place to capture that sediment. So if the groups of homeowners on a bayou decide to, to create their own SAD or they're, or they team up to dredge their bayou. Now they'll be at least have a chance to keep it clear. Because the way things have been done for the past hundred years, it just fills right back in because nobody's capturing the sediment before it gets there. So I just wanted to highlight that because I think there's been some confusion. Some people have said that we've taken dredging out and then some people say we've put it in and. This has not really changed. This is the, the format that the association has been on. We, I started talking about in 2014. Luckily, I haven't been doing that as much lately. Other people have, but it's pretty much the same story. This, this river is 100 years old, essentially, almost. The dam will be celebrating its 100th anniversary in less than five years. And the last 10 years have been very, very weedy. The previous, you know, 90 or so wasn't a big deal. Let's get ahead of this now so that we can have a good future moving forward. So I encourage you to, to vote on this tonight. We've had overwhelming support at all of our public hearings, including tonight and in the, the comment cards. And so I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in person that would like to comment? Anyone virtually? Yes, we have two people so far who've waited patiently. The first is Andy Mayer.
Good evening. My name is Andy Mayer. My tiny little parcel is at 2990 Thornapple River Drive. And I actually am immediately adjacent to Ken Clapp's parcel, right by the dam. And I guess as a point of information, my annual taxes are only $80 per year. So this would effectively. Triple my annual tax liability. That said, I'd like to remind the board members that the keyhole parcel section of the zoning ordinance. Restricts development of any vacant parcel on the water that has less than 100 feet of frontage. So I guess my main point is that. Equally assessing every parcel is not fair and equitable because vacant parcels have already been restricted for. Performing any development on them by this keyhole ordinance. My second point, I guess, is the township took this on their own accord. You've heard various and sundry opinions about where there are problems with weeds. Right there by the dam, it was even mentioned that it isn't a problem. None of these things are a problem for me. This would provide absolutely no value to my property whatsoever. So I guess as a result of that, I am completely against this special assessment district as currently written. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, John Meyer is next.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. We, I, I think, I'm, I'm sorry, John Meyer, I'm 3444 Goodwood. We're along the Goodwood stretch there. We have the Goodwood launch ramp that we, we use twice a year. It's a great stretch of river and there is no weeds fortunately right in front of our, our house at this point. But on Labor Day, we decided, our son said, let's take a canoe trip. We'll put in, put in the kayaks and canoes down at Roos Park. And come down the river, enjoy a nice day on the river. So that's a great idea. So we put in at Roos, paddled down a little bit, probably the first mile. There were some weeds, but as we get closer and closer to the 60th street area, we actually, the kayak stopped in the current. Due to the weed growth and the just green scum that was on that river. In paddling through the river, our paddles got stuck and wrapped up with weeds. You had to stop, clean off the weeds off the paddles in order to continue kayaking. So I, I can certainly relate to. Ms. Rissy's story of somebody getting tangled up in seaweed and weeds and, and dying and perhaps drowning. Had that been a little kid wrapped up in that weed, it would have been a catastrophe. This continued down the river until I think we got around the point of. Where the golf course is, which was the last area. I have, I supplied Ben with some pictures of this and I hope that's in your packet. I took a picture of the 60th street area and the. Area off the end of the golf course. Both more weeds than I have ever seen in that river and I know it is just, has gotten worse and worse and continues to get worse. And then we have got to do something to stop this or it will just, it'll keep on going down the river. And I just have one more comment. Is action going to take place tonight or are you just listening to our input and then come up with a reason to put this off again like you did at the last meeting? That's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. We have Kelsey and I'm not certain how to say her last name. Baco. Hello?
Hello. Yes, this is Dorian Calzabacco, 7784 Thornapple Bayou Drive Southeast. First, thank, thank each of you for your public service to the community. Thank you to the Thornapple River Association for what they provide members. We're here today to share that we do not support the Thornapple River. We're here today to share that we do not support the Thorn Apple River SAD as it is written at this time. There are no delineations and specifics of how the dollars will be utilized or where they'll be used within the sad. We're aware per township communications that not, not all areas with the sad in need will receive improvements. As there are not enough dollars within the assessments to like to do so. It was specifically called out, the dollars are unlikely available to impact all bayous in the district. Currently, we do not have water access or access to the river from our property. And therefore could possibly be paying for improvement that do not impact our property or property that we may or may not be able to utilize. Previously, our land did have water access. Don't get us wrong, we are in support of improvements to our bayou that would return water access to our home. We're in support of weed removal, silt removal and items included in the sad assessments to all properties impacted. We're not in support of this sad as we believe that is not fair to anyone with the sad district to pay for possible improvements. That they themselves do not have access to or could possibly not benefit their property. We would love to be able to spend time on the water and on our, and our bayou fishing and could potentially via our property. If items within the sad would be granted within our area. Currently, we have to travel elsewhere to other lakes and rivers to enjoy our water activities as we do not currently have access from our property. If this sad had specific provisions, we could possibly have been in support. We recommend taking time to review and update the sad language with specific details of use of dollars. And due diligence confirming that items within the sad would occur based on state federal regulations approvals and actual dollars available. Thank you for your time, Dorian and Kelsey.
Thank you.
At this time supervisor, last friends, there's no one else with raised hands.
Thank you.
We close the public hearing. Support.
That's a motion by Treasurer Pierce, supported by Trustee Kessel to close the public hearing. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Discussion. And motion or motion by the board. Works later.
I just wanted to say to my fellow board members, I was on the river yesterday. I was a guest of a homeowner who has property on Sequoia. And she took me, she said we couldn't go all the way down to Sixtieth because the weeds were too bad. She took me all the way up to the Cascade Dam. And there were several areas where we had to actually go all the way around to the outside edge of the river to get around the weeds. Because they were encroaching so badly. It was really bad by the golf course as well. There's high side and low side of the river and it, you know, it looks worse in some places than others. But I do think the encroachment is really getting out of hand. And especially particularly on Sequoia, it's really obvious, but the weeds are just awful. I think as a safety matter also, I think that we should approve the special assessment district. And I'm very much in support of it.
Thank you.
Make a motion that we approve the resolution of confirmation of the special assessment role, wins, payment and collections. Special assessments for Thorn Apple River Special Assessment District number one. Support.
I just have to, I want to make a comment before we vote and anyone else that would like to is more than welcome. From when we moved into Cascade. Twelve, thirteen years ago, we got lucky and just happened to the, the fix repper that we could afford was on the other side of the dam. So we were fat and happy along with everyone else because our bank account is, is well funded. If we had just chosen a different house or something else available above river. So not saying it as, sorry, I, this is an important subject. I think that the township has a duty to maintain the river. I don't think the township has, has done that duty. I don't think we've done enough as a community to protect the Thorn Apple. So separately, but, but there's so many different moving parts. So people are going to be mad no matter what. I wish that my predecessor, I wish I should have skipped this meeting and let him sub for me, but it doesn't matter. What we're being asked to do as, as the board is to, is to. Tax, impose a tax on certain residents, not everybody, but just certain residents. And, and what's in front of us is we are asked to, to impose a tax that some of those people want and some of them don't. It goes with the territory, but I'm just trying to explain what we're asked to do and what's in our lane. Because it's important and it's not, there's a lot of different factors to consider. So the problem from my end is that you're both right. Both sides are right. We've got a vast majority of residents who want to pay, who are able to pay. And what you're requesting is completely reasonable. It's appropriate. I would want the same thing, maybe a different method, but I'd want the same thing. Flip side is the people who are opposed to it. They have a good point that why is someone who has a little lot or a lot that is not valuable? Being taxed the exact same amount as the golf course or as Maricabo Shores? And why are the backlot owners who, who get to enjoy the benefit of, of motorboating the river? Not on the hook for it, for sharing any of this cost. While at the same time, there's a resident, I know personally that his, the waterfront area in front of his house was declared a wetland. So he's got the frontage, but he doesn't have the ability to have a dock or a boat where he lives. So you're both right. The board's in a, in a position where we're being asked. We, we signed up for this, but it's just a matter of who do we want to disappoint or what's the best decision? From our perspective, our role, our duty is that the assessment must be proportional to the benefit. That's what we're supposed to look at. The assessment has to be proportional to the benefit for every single resident being affected, the whole role collectively. On a side note, I should have put it up on the, it hasn't gone anywhere, but one. Why don't we give the dam back to the residents who live there so that you guys can benefit from the, the income from the electric income? But you're not going to like the answer because I asked about it multiple times. And the sad reality is the problem was the Merck licensing. And so we've got Sanford and the Midland, sorry, this is too long or I'm boring you. It just seems like it's a really important topic and there's so much to consider. So, so the reality is the residents back in the day. Were unable to get the Merck licensing to, to, so that they could even produce and get the income from the electricity. So the township took it over. We were able to maintain it so that we could be licensed so that we could get the income. But now if we were turning around and giving it to the, the associate or to the river owners, just like we got lucky and have. Which I fully would support, the reality is that you probably, Merck wouldn't give you the license that you need to produce the electricity to get the income. So the reality is. In a perfect world, you guys deserve and should have the dam just like the rest of us down the river. But it probably wouldn't happen. Secondly, we've got. The income that comes from the electricity, we've got at least fifty thousand dollars after we pay for a rainy day fund. And after we pay for the dam maintenance, that just goes into our general fund. Ben can verify the exact amount. But the township can and should, separate from this SAD, separate from this. Should put that fifty thousand dollars towards maintaining the river. We haven't done it. It hasn't gone anywhere. I'm going to have to remember it now, but I'm going to put it on the agenda for the next meeting. So at least if it's a, if there's a reason that I'm not aware of, but I've flushed it out pretty fully. Then you can at least know why it's not happening. And then as a board. Our public decisions that affect the taxpayers have to be decided in the public. This decision, every step of the process is, is a decision that's decided by the majority of seven votes. It doesn't matter, the supervisor is one out of seven. I have the same amount of clout as anyone else here. But all decisions, including moving the process forward, have to be decided in public by the board collectively. So it's got to be terrible for every, everybody who's just waiting, waiting around the township to do something. But we can't talk and we don't talk behind the scenes. So every one of us can call the attorneys. We should, I did, I tried not to milk it, but I made sure that I understood before I'm voting on this imposed tax on residents. Every board member has that ability to call the attorney. Every board member can talk one-on-one with Ben, but we cannot get together in private to weigh these decisions. So I understand it's frustrating. I could be even just boring the heck out of you guys, but at least you'll have an understanding. So. Personally, and we can get it, there's, there's more to cover. But what I would recommend, and it's not kicking the can at all, because it's been waited, no, just listen, just listen. No, you know what? Before you, just listen. That's all you have to do is just listen. And I'm only one of seven votes, so if I'm wrong, you still got six more. We as a board can remove people from the role. We cannot add people. And that's pretty much all we can do to amend the role, but we can do that without another public hearing. So what I would suggest is that as a board, but we have to do that collectively in public. We can't do that behind the scenes. I can't do that. It has to be done publicly and approved publicly. So what I would recommend and, and I'm just trying to explain it. You guys can all be as mad as you want. What I would recommend is that because all this happens in a procedure or publicly. Is that we use right now to process all the comments. We have the authority to remove certain people who have made a really good argument that this special assessment. Might not be proportionate to the benefit they're receiving. We can do that and we can approve it minus a few of those people at the very next meeting two weeks from now. I apologize for the delay, but it doesn't delay when the special assessment district takes into effect. And it wouldn't need to be any more than the following meeting, which is what, September twenty-second? And I don't look at it as kicking the can. I look at it as fulfilling our duty to both sides. And I frankly think it's the responsible thing to do. Because if our job is to determine fairness and the equity of the tax that we're being asked to impose on people. I would feel better if we could remove some of those people, doesn't, doesn't require another public hearing. No, that's the part of the process. So, but I would go on record saying I would approve it in two weeks. And if not, I'm on record saying. That I committed to it. I, that's all I'm trying to say. Otherwise, if we were to pass it as written. Personally, I have a few concerns with what we're being asked to do. I completely sympathize with where you're coming from, but I have a few concerns. So. And I don't look at it as a delay and I understand why you do, but.
We already have a motion on a second.
There's a motion and support.
A motion and support on the table.
There's a motion and support to adopt it tonight on the table. We have to vote on that.
Would I make some comment?
Yes, please.
First of all, for those people that have a, a concern that they're unfairly taxed. Ben, correct me, but there is a procedure that they can take to Lansing and appeal?
There is, correct. So the next portion of this, if the township board should choose to approve the resolution. Is everybody in the special assessment district gets a notice of the approval of the special assessment district. And their rights to protest a special assessment with the tax tribunal official.
Okay. Next, next comment is. If we pass this tonight, you're not getting any money out of the dam, flat out. Okay, because you got your money. My last comment and to your college that's out there, thank you for bringing this up. Watch what you put on your lawns. Watch, watch what your contractors put on the lawns because you know what? This is part of the problem. And by the way, Thorn Apple Point Golf Course is owned by the county. They're not going to pay a tax. That's all I have to say. I know they're on the roll. Yes, sir.
I have to ask a question. You just made a comment that if you don't, if you, I think you said something like, don't pass it tonight. That you said something about we wouldn't have access to fifty thousand dollars electrical funding.
You know what? What I'm saying is that was, that would have been something that we could have looked at. But that has nothing to do with this.
I think I'll put it.
We as homeowners, in my, in my opinion, are stepping up to the plate to take care of natural resources that we all love. Even if people don't use the river, they can see it and, and they can see its beauty. And, and yes, there may be some people that are against the way it's being funded. However, we are stepping up saying we are willing and welcome to help do the funding. I would like to see the township also step up and help contribute in other ways.
Well, that, that definitely can be part of the, part of the budgetary process that we look at every year.
I'm going to put it on the next agenda separate from the SAD and maybe part of the compromises. Instead of going to the general fund, it goes to river maintenance, but then maybe the, it's more of a community wide. I'll put it on the agenda for next week because I haven't heard a reason why we are prohibited from doing it.
I was under the impression that we already crossed, we went through this process once. So I know that you said something like the attorneys structured by Article three and Article four. I'm not clear why that was, what caused that, but it feels like here we are again. So I'm, I'm.
We have to vote on this motion.
I know, but as long as we're, I'm, today's not going to be the meeting where I get a backbone and run a smooth three-minute meeting. But I'd rather. I never was presented with the cer, with the certification and I didn't know about it. So we passed it. The supervisor has to certify the role. It's a formality, but it has to happen. I didn't know about it. And I learned about it after the fact and it wasn't done. So it's a pain in the neck. It's frustrating, but it had to be done properly for it to be valid. I know some attorneys who live on the river disagreed with it, but we had two different firms give us the same advice. So apologize. But that's why. Yes. Totally.
This is in public. Can we vote?
Yeah, and just so that we're all, maybe everyone, I guess I would only say that I would ask that we vote. Because the opportunity to remove people who have a pretty strong argument. Why it's not fair have to be removed right now before we vote or we can't remove them. But here's, but here's, and this is the other thing too, that we talked about that I asked attorneys. You got to look at what the, the deciding body is looking at from the appeal process. The decision about what's equitable and fair happens at the township. And at the tax tribunal, they're just making sure that the process was correct. And there's, they have a ton of discretion and it's, they err towards the, the municipality. So the realistic, yes, they can appeal, but the reality is based on how it's written, it may not be fair, but it's going to survive the appeal. And our attorney looked at the four appeals that happened the last time and said each one of those would be shot down by the tax tribunal. So the time to, to address the hard topic is, is before it goes there.
What were the numbers?
I think what you really talked about, is you're, you're, you're saying, is it really fair for someone who paid three hundred dollars a year? And my position is, is that when I look at what I bought my house four, three years ago and what it's worth today. Three hundred dollars a year is not in comparison to what we are all being by being on the river. Whether you view it, whether you use it, or whether you have, you know, you're sitting on a bluff and you're able to represent to your buyer. That you are now having this beautiful view. The, the amount of money that our, that our property is, is increased based on this beautiful natural resource. Is, is exponentially greater than three hundred dollars a year. I mean, you just have to be, you know. And so I'm just, I understand your fairness argument, but it's just so small.
No, I understand, I agree with you and the problems I agree with every single one of you.
I think we have.
We're all right. I agree with every single point.
I think the point made was that nothing is perfect. And I think each one of us in this room could find ten to a hundred examples of taxes we paid. Like maybe for the Iraq war that we didn't agree with, but that's part of democracy. So we are going to pay for things we don't want and we don't like. It's just part of what it is. Nothing is perfect. And so, you know, I think that's just part of, of our daily life. I could think of, like I said, I could probably sit down and come up with a hundred things that I didn't agree with. But I've hit my taxes and I move on with life and that's all goodness. And so I'm ready to vote. We've got a motion and a support.
So, and if that's, I'm just happy that my vote is at the end of the roll call. So realistically, it's irrelevant and I hope, I, but it's on the next agenda. Sorry, what? Sorry, what? I, we'll cross that bridge when it gets to it. We need four votes no matter what. So we'll just see. Hopefully the seventh doesn't matter because I agree with every single one of you. So the motion was what, to approve?
Yes.
The, the resolution or the approval of the, of the Thorn Apple River, verbatim as written, and that was by Trustee Castle and it was supported by.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Treasurer Pierce, and then it was supported by Trustee Castle. By Trustee Nordhook. Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Castle.
Yes.
Treasurer Pierce.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Shepley.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Slater. Yes. Supervisor Lusprance.
No, but not because I disagree, it just doesn't matter. The next, the next agenda, the next agenda will have the dam funds. Thanks Scott.
Are you a public comment now?
I think so.
Almost.
I mean, I think so, just a second. We are.
Okay. Scott Rissy, 7238 Cascade Road. I, I just wanted to give you a quick little.
Can you call to order the room somehow?
Tidbit here that I think would be important to hear. With respect to the Cascade Dam.
Yes.
When you were talking about the revenue of the dam, a lot of people don't realize that the Cascade Thorn Apple River Association had a Special Assessment District in the seventies, which funded all maintenance and liabilities of the Cascade Dam. And that extended up until 1986. And the reason for that, the reason the Thorn Apple River Association did not take title to the Cascade Dam is because Consumers Energy had a clause in the contract that prevented the dam from ever generating electricity in the late seventies when, so they worked out the negotiation with the township to take title and we would bear the brunt of the maintenance. In the late seventies, when the price of fossil fuels went up, Consumers Energy came back, or Consumers Power then, came back to the township and said it can generate power again if you want. We went through the process of re-electrifying it and in 1986, we petitioned the township to end the Assessment District where we were maintaining the dam. So this river association covered all the liabilities of that, of that dam when it was not generating any revenue. Now that it generates revenue, since 1986, the river association has countless times asked the river board for, I'm sorry, the township board for a sharing of revenue, which I believe, I want to say it was Paul Slater originally in the process, said that we would see a percentage, but it never came to fruition. And, and so it's, I just wanted to bring that history to you, that we have attempted to, to, and we felt that that would be fair because we did cover the dam when it was a liability. But I just thought you should know the history there.
Mr. Rissy, I'd like to hear more and I really appreciate all the work you've done on the half river.
Thanks.
And we'll go after the airport next. Anyone wishing to make a public comment on any issue? Mr. Whitley, just let's finish it off. Take us home, Mr. Whitley.
Chuck Whitley, 5030 Sequoia Drive. It's, it's been a long road getting here and part of it has been made a little more difficult than it should have been. And particularly the notice that went out this past time, you know, in the Sunday paper, it said, you know, for the complete roll, go to the cascade township dot whatever. There was no reference there to the roll other than page 247 of the April 11th packet associated with that meeting. So I went to the township, I said, hey, I would like to get a copy of the roll. And they found an area called Community Projects and said, here's what it is, you know, here's the role. So they gave me a printout from this Community Projects portion of your webpage and it has not been updated since spring, has no information. It talks about this page will be updated as documents become available and approved by the township board. If you have any questions, please contact Ben Swayze, Township Manager. There are links here that are associated with the early process, not a single word about the termination of that process, the restart of the process, tonight's meeting, anything. So you either need to get this thing off of your website so that it's not there misleading people or, you know, put something there. And as far as the notices, I, I personally find it very much of a pet peeve when someone says, yeah, it's on my website and it gives the top level and it's like, okay, now you have an adventure to go find it. You know, I don't think that's maintaining the spirit of the publication of, of that sort of notice. And I, I think that, you know, a little more openness would have made this process go a lot smoother along the way because there would have been, you know, a roadmap that we could see where we went, where we're going, and it could have been so much easier. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. We'll get it better. I, Manager Swayze, you heard all that? I'm not saying it's all you, but thank you, it's fair points. Mr. Rissy, I owe you an apology for when this first came up, some of the questions were legit, but how I just kind of was so rude to you, I didn't understand as much and I didn't appreciate how much you've done for the river. So maybe it's a fair trade-off after your wife assumed that I tried to purposely trash it, but I just want to say that I owe you an apology for how I kind of put you in a tough spot without understanding all of it. But I can't wait to talk about the history and everything. It wasn't a clean meeting, but I think it's pretty clear that we all can do better for the Thorn Apple. Thanks for coming. Anyone else wishing to comment? Any manager comments? Oh, I'm sorry.
If any of our Zoom participants would like to participate in the public comment, please raise your hand. That's star nine if you're on the phone. Just wait a moment. It looks like no one else would like to speak.
Thank you. Manager Swayze?
Yeah, I just wanted to say one thing, not to prolong the night too, night too long, but this week we got a resignation from a long-term township employee, Steve Peterson. Started as a planner in Cascade Township over 23 years ago, worked up to Planning Director and then to the Community Development Director. And he's moving on to new challenges and I want to thank him for his service to the township. You know, I think we all have, anybody that's been involved in the township over the past, you know, 20 years has a, something they've probably worked on with Steve. My best memory is the improvements to the rec park. So I've been here eight and a half years and in that time, we put the dog park in and we put the basketball court in and we put the ADA accessible playground in, the pickleball courts. And during the pandemic, that was a haven for people that were needed to get out of the, get out of their houses. So I appreciated that project and if you've appreciated Steve's service to the township over the past 23 years, I'm sure he'd be interested in hearing from you. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Four comments?
Yeah, I got one. First of all, as I always do, I stand up and thank you folks for being here. It's the reason that we're here is because you're here. And as the township supervisor said, we can't please everybody, but we got to go with the majority of the people. I have my own opinions, she has her opinions and definitely the old farts here have got their opinions too. And thanks for being here.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Trustee Shepley, I just like to say that Trustee Shepley had a, we had a resident ask about the big pothole as you go into the DNW gas station right off Cascade, right by the Chowhound. So we drove through it and it's on public property, it's on that bank property, so it's private, so the township and the road commission can't do anything about it, but it's a big pothole. So Trustee Shepley, without doing it, without telling anybody, when he went to Home Depot, he grabbed two extra bags of cement and put them in today. So if you wonder what happened to the pothole, we can all thank Trustee Shepley. And he didn't submit a receipt to the township, he just got it done.
But boy, will I talk to the county about that.
And thanks to the board who made hard decisions so that I didn't, I got to pop out. Thank you. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Second?
Or?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Were adjourned. Thank you.
Mr. Pierce. Yes. You made the second.
Ben, you got a half minute?
I do.
Throw a couple bricks in your backpack.
All right. Let me get my pen because I will forget about it if I don't write it down. Hey, if we get a message, tell us.
Good plan.
Put it under there. And this team.
So it was brought to my attention this week, so.
And that's something that we all do, you know, I work three P P and if I need to borrow it, we'll make sure.
We really, I mean, we have a policy. So it's a little bit different, you know, with private companies. You know, we have a policy because it's publicly owned equipment, even though they're probably...